15, 2022, 7:00 PM, and this is the regular council meeting. We will start off by voting to elect the President Prothem in place of Mark and Jimmy Patterson.
Dan Wireball?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move up the beat ladies now.
All right. Well, we'll call council to order at 6 o'clock, or 7 o'clock. Oh, that says 6 o'clock. Where's the maintenance department at there, Mayor?
Get your script right there.
Oh, here we go. Is this it?
Yep, that's basketball.
All right. All right, we'll call, uh, call to order at 7 o'clock, pledge of allegiance. All stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Can you do that, or do I?
McKeever, absent. Myers?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Potter?
Here.
Sherrick?
Here.
Spiegel?
Here.
Young?
Here.
All right, now's the time that we, uh, permit, uh, visitors to speak. Just want to remind everyone, as from our last meeting, I, since this is a new council season, just remind everybody where we have a three-minute limit, but we won't adhere too, too close to that, but we do have that, so, uh, please state your name and, uh, address, and then, uh, let us know what you, what your concerns are.
Vicki Deshawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bucyrus, Ohio. On February the 28th, 2022, I sent an email to interim law director Gernert on the legal notice appearing in the Telegraph form dealing with the advertising for bids for leasing of tillable land, also known as farmland bids. My email set forth the following: one, that Ohio revised code section 721.03 requires that the advertisement on leasing or sale of real estate run for five consecutive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation; two, that the legal notice did not run for five consecutive weeks; and three, that it would appear that the bid opening scheduled for March 1, 2022, at 10:00 AM would need to be canceled, and it would be necessary to re-advertise the legal notice for five consecutive weeks in the Telegraph form. My email to him ended with the question, "Do you concur?" At the March 1, 2022 council meeting, Mayor Reeser read the service safety director's report stating the farmland bids were opened on March 1st, and the Board of Control would meet sometime the next week to award the bids. Since Mr. Gernert has not responded to my email, I am inquiring at this time on the status of the bids.
So, um, I was in the office, and we, March 28 through May, March, February. 28 through March, whatever, uh, but we're republishing. We have to republish and then re-award the bids.
So you're concurring, then, that it was not done properly?
It was only published four times, yeah. Yep, gotta redo it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Ryan Bloomfield, uh, live 114 West Livery Street, and, um, we're having a problem down the alley, right behind Tim Horton's, the easement there. There is a fence there, um, you can't see, if you're going north down the alley, you can't see anybody coming across, and there's no stop sign, there's a yield sign there, but a lot of people don't yield to that, and there's been, um, one recorded accident there, and, you know, the warmer temperatures, people are walking down, and I just don't want someone to get hurt, and I would like to have that taken care of.
Excuse me, can I ask you, where did you say it was at, sir? Where did you say it was at?
What was the location?
Yeah, what was the location?
Um, it's actually right behind Tim Horton's, on the alley there.
Okay.
Uh, the alley right in between, um, Good Hope Church and United Bank.
Okay, okay, wait, thank you.
If I took Ryan, that was, um, that was discussed in Traffic Commission about a year, year and a half ago, years ago, maybe. Could we, could we send that back to the Traffic Commission again and have that re-looked at, re-looked at?
We'll look at it tomorrow and bring it up.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Always feel free just to call us, our numbers are on the internet, or, or call, uh, the clerk, and she will give you our numbers, so, uh, you know, I mean, something like that, you don't have to come up here and make, you should just be able to pick up the phone and call somebody, okay? There's seven of us here, I think any of us would.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Or you just stop up at the mayor's office, too.
Okay. I figured, cause it was a council meeting, so I figured I'd just come up.
That's fine.
Thanks, Ryan.
That's good, too.
Thank you.
Any other?
My name is Carolyn Sharman. I live at 1065 Eastville Avenue, Bucyrus. I would like to announce to the Bucyrus residents who live in precinct 2B, who are registered Republicans, that I will be running for your Republican Central Committee party seat. I want to involve all my precinct to more updated meetings and events, so they may attend. I want to give you the chance to attend our auctions, dinners, and meet our senators and congressmen. If you are a registered Republican in precinct 2B, I am asking for your vote. Early voting starts in April. Sharman, for other precinct B, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, I've got a question.
Yes.
Carolyn, I know, most of all us know the wards 1, 2, 3, and 4. Where's 2B? I know it's obviously where you live, do you know what the general outline of that is?
I think it goes up to Oakwood, maybe, and, um, Isaacville.
Okay. I, I'm sure we have a map on the website, I just, I mean, for people that are watching, I thought it'd help you to.
We do, John. We do not have a map on our website.
Oh, we don't have it on our website?
But I have, well, you have to do so you did.
Okay.
I'm sure the.
I'll put it up.
Go down to the election form where I got mine.
I was just trying to help for the people that are watching.
I think they should know what their precinct is.
All right, any other, uh, public participation? If not, we'll get on with this thing here, and, uh, any, uh, oh, no, we need to accept the minutes for March 1st. Do you have a motion to accept the minutes, or is there any discussion?
Move to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, next, any communications or petitions? I guess not, it's blank, so, uh, now we're gonna do standing committee reports, plating, Mark McKeever, he's not here, anything?
Nothing from plating, sir.
Public lands and buildings?
Um, nothing at this time.
All right, health and safety?
No report, sir.
Uh, finance, well, typically I like to give you a little bit of update, but I'm kinda in a different position today, so I'm gonna pass on that. Uh, no, no report tonight, economic development?
I don't have anything to report tonight as well.
Service, any reports?
No report.
All right, traffic commission, Mayor Reeser, have we? When's the next one?
Uh, well, we just got one item, and we'll probably.
Yeah. Oh, we haven't, have any, do we have any slated?
Were we looking into some of the other speed limits in town, too?
I'm sorry, I left my hearing here.
Speed limits in town?
Speed limits?
You, you said that you're gonna look at a few places?
Yeah, I did, I, um, we're gonna bring up the, uh, at the traffic commission meeting.
Okay, so then I guess we'll move on to the report of city officers. Mayor Reeser, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I'm sorry, John. Thank you, Mr. President, um, well, the news last week wasn't, uh, wasn't good, it was very difficult to take about the closing of General Electric, it, you know, affects a lot of people who, uh, who work and live here, and, uh, friends, and, you know, people that actually, former council members, uh, are gonna be seriously affected, uh, it's been a tradition, I think we all know the people that have worked there, still working there, retired there, it's going on 80 years, um, did speak to the plant manager, um, who was also losing his job, uh, so, you know, the whole lighting division, Cleveland, Bucyrus, and Logan is, uh, is slated for, uh, closing, so, uh, there is a negotiation period that has to go on, uh, so we're not really giving up our hope, um, everyone, I think, is gonna give their best effort, from, uh, elected officials to the union, and, uh, we'll do anything we can, can do to, to keep the plant here. Um, it's gonna be difficult to replace these jobs, if we do in fact lose them, there's probably the highest-paying jobs in town, so, uh, but, uh, investing, real estate investors, by the name of Phoenix Group, bought this building last year, and, with the intention of, uh, bringing jobs and leasing space out, so, I think that's encouraging, it's not just gonna sit idle, um, so they will be actively looking for tenants, so, um, I had more comments, rather than read them tonight, if you can go to Bucyrus Telegraph Forum website, I went into more detail, Jerry did a nice job of reporting, uh, this event of last week, so, so, one more thing I do wanna, before I close, um, I didn't add this to my report, but I want to just verbally add it, um, Success Center, aptly named Success Center, raised $30,000 for scholarships last week for the Arts for Success, we thank everyone who donated artwork, and, uh, all the ones that bid on it, so, it's, uh, it's been a very good addition to the community, having the Success Center here, so, that's all I have for tonight.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think it's still listed as an open project for health and safety, but just in case it's not, I'd like to refer, I would like to discuss the, uh, the, bring back up some of the vacant building ordinance that we've been discussing, uh, and, as it relates to the, the possibility of the GE building becoming vacant, you know, later this year.
Yeah, I think that is in there because I.
I'm fairly certain it is, but, uh, if you think it is, too, we're good with that.
Can you close that off?
Okay, we can just put it on the agenda for Thursday, then.
Okay, any questions for the mayor? Okay, uh, I guess then we'll move on to the, uh, service, service director's report.
Yeah, short, thank you, Mr. President, again, a short report from Mr. Wagner, uh, there's a couple referrals here. We'd like to refer the Offway Reservoir Path to Public Lands, Buildings, and Finance Committees, and also would like to refer the 2021 OPWC Grants to Service and Finance Committees, and finally, uh, get some warm weather, and things start greening up pretty quickly, flowers starting to pop out of the ground, buds are starting to swell, everybody kinda gets outside and looks at their, what they need to do to fix it up, and so, we've had calls already about the compost site, it will be open tomorrow, Wednesday, March 16th, and the hours will be 8 o'clock to 2 o'clock, seven days a week. That's pretty good.
Seven days a week?
Well, that's, I'm just looking at that myself, it's always been open 5, then we went to 6.
We've been asking for 7.
We got 7, okay.
It was only 3 days a week, 4 days the first time.
Yeah.
Now it's 5.
That's, that was your fault, too, by the way. No, 7 days a week is great, cause, you know, we do, most of this work we do on the weekend, so, all right, fantastic, and then John will post that on the website, too, won't you, John?
Yep, it's already posted.
It's already posted, see, there you go.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for the mayor, for him to relate to the service director? Oh, okay, uh, Auditor Schiffer?
Uh, Mr. President?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead and move to, uh, refer the Offway Reservoir Path to Public Lands and Finance.
Okay, I missed that, thank you. Do we have a second? Second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
And I will move to put the, uh, OPWC Grants in the Service and Finance.
Okay, thanks, Terry, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Captain has a second. Got it all?
Yep.
Okay, now, Auditor.
Need to vote.
Obviously skip Ryan.
Need to vote.
Oh, did we?
Not on the second one.
Oh, the second one, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? All right, okay.
Oh, we missed the law director, I'm sorry.
No worries.
All right, I wonder why you were waiting, I thought you were just being friendly. Okay, Law Director, President, please.
Previously, I brought up the bed tax, and we referred it to economic development, but it should be in Finance Committee, um, so I would ask for a referral for the bed tax to go to Finance Committee, and then, uh, I would ask, prior to considering proposed legislation, um, that we go into executive session to discuss pending or imminent litigation. There's a couple things that I need to discuss with you guys.
Okay, you mean tonight?
Tonight.
Okay.
Well, then, I'll, I'll make a motion for your referral for the bed tax?
I'll second that.
We're referring that to.
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, uh, and then, I guess we'll do that right before we go.
All right.
To legis, or, consideration for legislation, all right, so then we're, now we're up to Auditor Schiffer. Unless, well, did we have any questions for the law director? I'm sorry.
When did you need us to go into executive session?
After visitors' input and before consideration of proposed legislation. Today.
Yeah, you caught that part.
Okay, we're good? Okay, all right, Joyce?
All right, thank you, Mr. President, I'm gonna make you really happy tonight, I have no report and no referrals.
All right, and, uh, so we have the treasurer's report here, and what do we do, do we typically review this and then vote on it next time, is that how we do that?
I wanna say.
Can't remember how we do that.
Normally, someone just make a motion to accept the file.
To accept the file.
And I'll, I'll make that motion for you.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You don't have that cheat sheet, it's probably here somewhere. So, do I have a motion to accept the city, well, then we have the fire chief and, uh, and police chief, they're not here, and we don't have a report, so, then we'll go to a motion to accept the city officer's report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No, any opposed? No opposed, and now we have another visitor's input regarding reports for standing committees. Would you like to say something now, Carolyn? Okay, I had a second thought there, didn't you?
Two of them, really.
Two of them, okay.
Genius. And then, my precinct, I'm going against Eric Grue.
Okay.
Okay, now, I have a question, um, for the mayor. Jeff, I've been out in the public the last two days, and I've been hearing a lot of very unhappy people concerning your post about the taxes. They, they are upset that you wanna change them, especially when there is no good-paying jobs in this town, and the closing of Westinghouse, or GE, so, what, and, I had a physician ask me, I told him I was coming here, he said you should be going door-to-door to business owners and asking them what you can do to get their business to come here, or to keep their business from closing, because this town is hurting in every way you look at it.
What was your, you actually said you had a question.
The question is, why are you considering changing the taxes?
Because we need more revenue.
But the people need jobs to be able to feed their families. There's no jobs in this town that are good enough to feed the, to feed the people. Look at the price of gas, they can't even afford to, I had to get Jim a credit card just so he can keep asking his car to go to work. That's no lie. So the people want you to answer, why do you feel that you need to do this for revenue, and we?
We're gonna, actually, excuse me for interrupting, I've only had two calls against it, I've had more.
Well, that, I don't care what you said, I'm talking about the panel that tell me.
I care what you said, I didn't interrupt you, so, I've only had.
Well, please answer.
Okay, I've only had two call, uh, two persons, and I, I don't see really anybody here tonight. Now, we're, we actually are going to postpone this till after tax season, until May to discuss it.
Okay, and as far as not seeing people here tonight to ask you that, when have you ever seen?
I mean, you said, you said everybody you've talked to is against it.
Everybody that I talked to, businesses, a doctor, and I'm not giving the main, aside that, Jeff.
Please have them call me, I'd be glad to talk to them.
But Jeff, how often do you even see anybody come to the meetings? That's just a good excuse for you to lay on. People don't come to these meetings.
Yes, ma'am. Actually, at the last meeting, we had quite a few people sitting out here hoping to speak with the mayor about this, and he was not here, so, yeah.
Why do they come if he's not here?
There, there were, there were quite a few people here this last night.
If you don't come to the meetings, the people can't ask you the questions, and you're wanting them to come to the meeting to ask you?
But I, I'm here, in eight years, I.
Well, I'm sorry, did, did you tell everybody out, out there in the world that you're gonna be at a meeting tonight?
I, I've only missed maybe one or two meetings here, Nate. Okay, well, thanks for your time, man.
I asked a question, the people were wanting to know, why are you doing this to this town?
We'll, we'll, we'll.
We're gonna discuss that in a future meeting, okay, and we'll let everybody know.
How you gonna let them know? How you gonna let them know? You gonna put it in the paper, or are you gonna advertise it?
Well, we're talking about May, are we talking, first meeting in May?
Yeah, we're waiting till after the April tax season, and we'll see our April revenues, and I'll, I'll.
Okay, people on Facebook in, in the city, you hurting, we will let you know.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Anything else, guys? Any other input from the, uh, audience there? Okay, yeah.
Vicki Deshawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive.
Yep.
Uh, just to follow up with Carolyn's, um, comment on the, um, income tax, I know at the last, and I can't recall off the top of my head, the committee meeting where there were, uh, people that did come and wanna talk about Finance Committee, and at the Finance Committee, uh, you had stated, Mr. Wireball, that the matter was going to be discussed at the April 7th Finance Committee meeting. Am I now understanding that that has been changed now to a date in May?
Yes, my last, uh, correspondence was that we would talk about it in May.
You stated that at the Finance meeting?
No, I, I learned that this week.
Okay.
Yeah.
That the mayor would like to talk about it in May, so.
Okay, do we know what day in May?
It's whenever he's ready to talk about it, no, we don't, but.
I'll let you know.
I'd say either the 5th or the 19th, those are our two committee meetings in May.
How soon will you be able to let me know?
Before the 5th or the 19th.
Before the 5th or the 19th of May?
Yeah, it'll be advertised, and the agenda's on the, uh, very soon.
Well, but we're back to, when you advertise with the agenda, that is, and I, and I'm going to assume you're talking about the agenda that's put on documents on demand, that talks about what's gonna be discussed at the various committee meetings?
Yeah, well, what, what's your point?
You, you, you. Do you want a 30-day notice, or you wanna?
The, the point is, we have the ability to change that agenda up until it's time for the meeting, so just because the agenda's put out, and you decided at last minute to just, to talk about it that night, or not talk about it, people don't have a heads-up. So she's literally asking for some notice in advance, more than just the 24 hours of having the agenda. It's very difficult.
Oh, we'll give, we'll give more than 24 hours, I promise that, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Kurt Fankhauser, uh, 616 Prospect, just following up with the tax, proposed tax on the out-of-town workers, the same meeting that this tax was brought up, it was also mentioned that income tax revenues are up in Bucyrus, so, if they're up, why do we need the additional tax? And I think maybe even Dan pointed that out, and, um, the last time, the entire time that I, I can remember, the only time that this income tax for out-of-town was waived was the city was like, gonna be $30,000 in the red one year, and Joyce had the idea that, I think they raised it a quarter of a percent, they just didn't forgive a quarter of a percent to get us out of that red a little bit, with, with, if GE is gonna impact our budget, and if, if it gets so bad in town that, you know, we're gonna have to start making cuts, why, why, why not sit back here and wait until we see what this GE impact is? Were you asking me this question? Well, I'm just, I'm just stating for the whole council here to consider.
Well, we're gonna discuss that in May, it sounds like, so.
And, um, as far as only hearing two people opposed to it on a phone call, I just today ordered 100 signs, the 18-inch by 24 for, against this tax, and they will be put out in Bucyrus.
Mr. President, just a clarification, th, this is not a tax, we're not raising taxes on anybody, we are reducing.
Except the out-of-town workers.
We are reducing the credit, we are proposing to reduce the credit, council's gonna have to, we're gonna debate it and discuss it, they'll vote it up or down, it's not a new tax on anyone, it's a, it's a 2% tax of what we have now, and they're gonna have to make a decision whether the need for additional revenue is such that they should reduce, no one's proposing to increase anyone's taxes except in the form of a credit, so, to call it a tax increase is not really, is not really what it is.
I, I think if you talk to the people that will have that additional money taken out of their paycheck every week, they're gonna have something else.
I understand why they would, too, especially because they haven't, they're not, their neighbors are paying taxes, and if they work out of town, I understand, there's people that are gonna be unhappy about it, but we'll discuss this, and we're gonna, we're gonna have everything ready to go in May, and then we can debate it, then council can decide what they wanna do with it, so, I will give my reasons why I think it's a good idea, and, uh, then we'll go from there.
Just get ready to see the signs on Plymouth Street, cause it's gonna be lined.
Okay, thanks for the warning, I appreciate that.
My mind is rolling.
All right, well, we'll give you one more chance here.
Well, you're good. I thank you for that, Mr. Dan Wireball, but I have a question for everybody sitting here. If, um, the people are being asked to take a tax credit deduction, would you guys all be interested in taking a tax, a 2% tax decrease in your money, in your pay for city council? Would y'all be willing to do that? I can tell by every one of your faces, the answer is no. So why should the other people, why don't you guys give to the revenue?
Carolyn, I was on the city council, well, city council went nine years without taking an inch.
I don't care about nine, I'm asking right now, during the time that you're talking about.
There's reasons why we can't, because.
Because there wouldn't be more money out of your pocket, plain and simple.
We don't, we don't, hold on.
The people out in the city don't make a whole bunch of money.
Carolyn, Carolyn, thank you. You're fighting the wrong guy.
No, I'm not telling you, they don't raise enough money to take the dividend.
Please take care of this.
Like he's asking. You guys take one.
Carolyn?
Don't care on me.
I'm running this meeting. Please sit down.
While I'm the head of the work of a job.
Could you remove her, please?
Yeah, could you remove me, please, because I want everybody on Facebook and that that's watching this meeting, maybe I'll be watching this.
Good.
You're not very well-liked as it is.
You can't come up here and yell at people.
I'm not being, you being, you being.
Yep, thank you.
Bye.
Bye. All right, so, let's move on, uh, now we're talking for executive session, is this what I have to read?
That's what you have to say.
That's what you have to say.
I need a motion to, and a second, to go into executive session to discuss pending or imminent legislation, or litigation, I'm sorry.
Do we have specific wording we have to use for that?
That's the specific-
The attorney just provided it.
Okay, so I will make a motion to go into executive session on pending or current, like, legislation?
Imminent.
Imminent litigation.
Litigation.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Then we have to do roll call, I believe.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going into-
No, we have to do a roll call.
Oh, we're gonna get it right now?
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
We have to do a roll call vote to go in and roll call to come out.
Okay.
Just read down the names there.
Just look around the room and go in order.
Okay. Young?
Yeah.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Uh, Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
We are in executive session.
7:31 PM. We need the roll call.
And then we do roll call.
After you start the recorder.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to come out?
After she starts the recorder.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, is he gonna announce everything?
Yes.
Okay, cool. And, okay.
Okay, I need, uh-
7:45.
You need a motion and second to come out of executive session.
Yeah, I need a motion and second to come out of executive session.
I will give you a motion to come out of executive session at 7:45 PM.
I'm sorry.
Terry's second.
Thank you.
It'll be a roll call.
Okay, um, Young?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, so, with that, we move to consideration of proposed legislation for the first time. So now, take it away.
Consideration of Proposed Resolution Number 207-2022, authorizing and directing the Service and Safety Director to contract with Crawford, Murphy &amp; Tilly, Inc. for the design of fiscal year 2023 projects at the Port Bucyrus Crawford County Airport, 2254 Isaac Field, Bucyrus, Ohio. Oh, gosh. Of reconstruction of aprons A and C and rehab taxiways B and D on behalf of the City of Bucyrus and to apply for a Federal Aviation Administration grant. Said cost to not exceed $48,000 with the city's contribution not to exceed $2,400 and further authorization and directing the city auditor to issue a warrant or warrants, as the case may be, in payment therefore against the proper appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. Consideration of Proposed Resolution Number 208-2022, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, to enter into contract with Ohio Department of Transportation to participate in its annual road salt bid and declaring an emergency. Consideration of Proposed Legisla-, Res- Resolution, Number 209-2022, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Public Service Safety Director on behalf of the City of Bucyrus, Ohio, to advertise for bids to enter into a contract, or contracts for the res- resurfacing of Arrowhead Drive and Woodland Drive. Said bids not to exceed $391,000 and $258,000 respectfully, respectively with the lowest and best bidder or bidders finally authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. Okay, we have to accept those ones before we do the next one.
Oh, do, do we, do we accept those?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, do we accept this as the first reading? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let me do that.
And then, pursuit, you want to do this now?
Yeah.
Pursuit to Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 11, 111.19, motion to suspend the rule, specifically Rule 11114, requiring resolutions to be referred to committees, and Rule 111.11, requiring three readings and put Resolution Number 210-2022 to a full vote tonight.
So moved.
Second.
I think you have to have a roll call.
And I'm reading this one now.
We have to have a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Young?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
So then you can have your first reading.
I'm sorry.
Now read it.
Now you can have your first reading.
You have the first reading.
This is still Proposed Resolution, okay. Proposed Resolution 210-2022 hereby acknowledging the approval of the Bucyrus City Council and Council President Jenny Vermillion to the settlement agreement and authorization or authorizing Mayor Jeffrey Reiser to execute the same on behalf of the city with Jones and Henry LTD for the sum of $275,000 payable to the City of Bucyrus and declaring an emergency.
One moment, that says $275,000?
Wait, what, I'm sorry? Our $270,000, I'm sorry, that was my, can we read it again?
Please read the entire thing again.
I'm so sorry. Okay, Proposed Resolution Number 210-2022 hereby acknowledging the approval of the City of Bucyrus Council and Council President Jenny Vermillion to the settlement agreement and authorizing Mayor Jeffrey Reiser to execute the same on behalf of the City of Bucyrus with Jones and Henry LTD for the sum of $270,000 payable to the City of Bucyrus and declaring an emergency.
Okay, so, do I need a, do I need a motion to accept that as the first reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me and Aaron.
Aaron?
Me and Aaron.
Okay.
Good. Okay, so, uh-
Please stop to do the 13, 2022.
Okay, there it is. Consideration of Proposed Legislation for the second time, um, Proposed Ordinance-
Mr. President, point of order, we have to have public participation for the things that we just had the first reading for first.
Okay. Is that on here?
It's not.
Oh, okay. So is there-
That's for the second reading.
So do we have, we have a, at this time we'll have public participation for the first reading of these, this proposed legislation. Anyone in the audience?
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect, is this the city paying $207,000 or receiving?
Receiving.
Is this the water plant?
Yeah, the water treatment, or, yeah, water treatment plant.
Okay. So now, consideration of Proposed Legislation for the second time. Can you read that, right?
Okay, Proposed Ordinance 13-2022, amending and supplementing Section 925.03 entitled rates under Chapter 925 entitled sewer service charges under Title V entitled sewers under Part 9 entitled streets, utilities and public services code of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Bucyrus.
Uh, do I mostly accept this as the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, I think we can go to this. Uh, so, for the second and third readings of Proposed Ordinance Number-
Point of order, you have to refer these back.
Oh, yeah, we gotta refer, okay. So, Proposed Resolution 207-22 is going to be referred back to finance, Proposed Resolution 208-2022 back to finance, and Proposed Resolution 209-2022 is referred back to finance, Proposed Ordinance 13-2022 will be referred back to finance also. Uh, any public participation now? With none, I guess we need committee report on pending legislation. Uh, well, I guess since I'm the chair, oh, finance is favorable with Proposed Resolution 207-2022, the airport FFA project, uh, finance is also favorable, Proposed Resolution 208-2022, ODOT salt, uh, finance is favorable, Proposed Resolution 209-2022, the Arrowhead and Woodland bid, and finance is also favorable with Proposed Ordinance 13-2022, the EPA stormwater. All right, so now, for the second and third readings of Proposed Ordinance Number 207-2022, the airport FFA project, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Who was second, I'm sorry?
I did.
Okay. Okay. Scherr?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever? Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Ordinance Number 207-2022, the airport FFA project?
So moved.
Second.
Was that Spiegel again, sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Scherr?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever, absent, Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ordinance Number 207-2022 is duly adopted.
If I'm in order, it's resolution.
Oh, what's it, resolution? Did I say ordinance?
Uh-huh.
Oh, that's what's sitting on here.
Oh, my bad, sorry.
Or, or resolution, okay, resolution, I'm sorry, thanks. Resolution Number 207-2022 is duly adopted. All right, now for Proposed Resolution 208-2022, uh, for the second, third reading of Proposed Ordinance Number 20, 208-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever, absent, Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever, absent, Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever, absent, Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever, absent, Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever, absent, Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes. Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 209-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Potter?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever, absent, Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes. Do I hear a motion to adopt Proposed Resolution 209-2022?
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Proposed Resolution 209-2022 is duly adopted.
Do we have to do that with the 210?
210, yes.
Yeah, so that's not gonna be on it, but we have to do it with this 2.
We have to do this one, okay. So, Proposed Resolution 2, oh, okay, for the second, third readings of Proposed Resolution 210-2022, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay. Um, Myers?
Yes.
Scherr?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever, absent, Wireball?
Yes.